This was something that we had talked about before and it was of a level of interest and we wanted to kind of have some conversation on it. So Kyle, do you want to kind of get us up to date please?
Sure, so I first want to apologize. I've tried to get other people here to come talk about it. I had three people canceled at the last minute to see if there were any back and forth communications. Anyone that's counsel had questions to ask people, but I had the OBS director for secondary schools cancel last minute and a couple other people canceled. So there's no one else here to direct questions to, but I kind of wanted to reframe it just a little bit differently here and get more of a conversation amongst council. I don't think there was a whole lot of conversation of what could happen. It was just kind of a yes or no on this as presented and I think I was looking more for kind of some kind of give and take to make this thing better. I don't think this is exactly what it needed to be set in stone, but I was hoping to see some feedback from other council members. So I'm just going to try not to read this completely, but I've...
Go ahead and read it completely.
I'll read it completely. I would like to point out, we have one guest who is a Lakewood residence in Baton Rouge. He was in the Jefferson County or leadership Jefferson County. Youth leadership Jefferson County, so he was interested in this and so he wanted to come and just see what we were talking about because they're trying to do something similar in Jefferson County. So this advisory panel or committee or whatever ends up being called, it's not to set aside one age group or demographic in this community above anyone else. I think many issues cross generations. Example, a young parent with a stroller has the same pedestrian issues as someone in a wheelchair or an elderly individual with a walker. I do think perspective is an important difference that we as a community may not necessarily be capturing for the betterment of this city. I think it's important to open our eyes and ears on some of the change in demographics and what the future holds. This is a proposed committee that is designed for the benefit of the community, for the benefit of council. Cities must prepare for tomorrow, so from a policy perspective, it is important to learn what's coming and what to do about it today from younger citizens that we currently do not hear from often enough. I think the benefits of this group would be multifaceted. Due to changing trends in workforce, especially evident millennials, there's a growing need for cities to revamp our efforts to market to this segment of the population for future success of the community. A growing workforce trend is working remotely and millennials are valuing place over career. This means they look for a place to live and then find a job, maybe a job that's in the city, or maybe they commute to a different city, or they work virtually. Harvard Business Review states that two-thirds of college-educated millennials choose their city before their job. They move across the country before they have a job. I see this personally with my neighbors and my family. My younger sister and many of her friends choose to come to Colorado before having a job in hand. They moved out here and then found jobs. I see this with my neighbor. She works from home managing an international IT team. Cities need to market themselves to millennials. I think the goals for this committee, one is to help get the word out to other millennials. I don't necessarily think we are the best avenue to get the word out to other younger people, but peer-to-peer recommendations is perhaps the most effective marketing tool for this generation. I think another goal for this committee would be to provide creative solutions. Too often, cities are stuck with what they know and have done in the past. According to the Rockefeller Foundation, 75% of millennials believe that they will live in a place that does not require a car. So I think that ties to the parking conversation that we have. I'm not saying that it's not a problem, but I'm just saying we need to get a different perspective and I think a group like this would help with that perspective. To me, the most important role of this type of committee is that of advice to council and staff on issues relevant to their generation. It is apparent that there is a void in this engagement and a group will allow for regular two-way communication with this demographic. This brings in a segment of the community that has not typically been involved in the local government process. Different generations think differently and that is the core motivation for proposing this group, to engage with a different thought process. To me, there are three main pathways for engagement. Suggesting that we have a system where citizens can come speak in front of council on Tuesdays at 6:30 is a form of passive engagement. Seeking out input when an issue has already arisen is reactionary. This pathway doesn't attempt to remedy an issue until there is an issue. I see city council making policy that builds communication such as this committee being proactive. We as a community need to get ahead of issues and problems before they happen. I think that we as a community start a visioning process to revamp the comprehensive plan and this is the perfect time to do it. I do not presume that this proposal is perfect or set in stone, as I said. This was created after examining what other cities have done and I think combines good elements of all of them. Yesterday, I sat and listened to a Wilmington, North Carolina city council meeting that discussed this exact same thing and brought up many of the same concerns and I think they had some good comments in that. I truly want to hear what everyone on council and in the community has to hear, what they want to see in this advisory group and how to make it better and how to make it work. Do we consider different ways to select members? I know those were just options I put on paper working with Mark and Sam. Does council want to have a specific task tied to the meetings? I would suggest that tying this group to the vision process and comprehensive plan would be good. I think Karina said she reached out to Mark and asked how the consultant is planning to reach out to this group and there wasn't really an answer. So I think this could be an answer to say, hey, how do we reach out to this generation as it relates to visioning? I think we need to be forward-thinking and perceptive and receptive when it comes to ways to improve the community. Rather than cast aside the possibility because of an apparent lack of involvement, let's think about how we can capture those who do want to be involved and use that energy to prove our decision-making ability and to improve Littleton as a community. That's my statement that I had there.
Any comments?
Yeah, our last study session, we brought this up and I don't think everybody either didn't quite understand why we have to have this separate group or why. And I applaud these guys that are coming out there and trying to put this group together. You know, I guess anybody can organize and anybody can come together and try to put together a similar group, but these guys are doing it. And as Kyle said, they're not as representative as I think they should be. What a great way for city council to engage this group. And again, things that we're not even thinking about, they're probably already thinking about. There's things coming down the pipe. You talked about parking and little things like that that are, it should be part of our comprehensive plan. We should be thinking, you know, do we really have a parking problem down the road if 75% of the millennials are thinking they're not going to have a car? So, you know, it's those types of things that will affect the city down the road. You know, Kyle's the closest one, I think, not to offend anybody else's age, but you know, I think they just think differently and their voice should be heard. And I'd like to support it to be an organization like this. I think it's, I think it's great.
I reached out to some other jurisdictions just to understand a little bit better the different forms of how some of this has come together or even the impetus of it. And where I, when I reached out to Mark, the reason that I reached out is my, I recognize and value very much the input that we get from all groups of our society. And when we are not, when we are not evolving how we communicate and engage, then there are parts of our society that maybe aren't engaged maybe to the same level. And so when I think about this particular group, what I call them an age demographic at this point, what is going to be really important to me is that we understand their perspectives, especially in light of and in the process of developing our vision. Because it's 20 years from now, it's impacting them maybe more than it's impacting me or impacting us in different ways. And I, you know, Kendi...
Kendi Keast?
Talked about community outreach being creative, being different, how do we do things differently so that we do engage different parts of the community? And so my question to Mark was, how are we reaching out to a younger population? You know, some of the ways that we've done in the past, we haven't seen that engagement. So how do we think, how do we approach it differently? So Mark, if you've been able to look into that, I'd appreciate an answer because for me, my concern was about the scope of the work, I guess, that we were asking of this group. And for me, it needs to be very limited and not only in scope, but maybe even term of why a group was brought together for a purpose. So if you could answer that.
Well, the next week, you're going to get a little bit deeper. I'll present to you today about the engagement process here of Kendi Keast as part of your strategic imperatives. We're providing you kind of a quick update to that. And we've also invited Kendi Keast to come here at the end of August roughly to come and be much more detailed, sit down with council on the study session and share with you kind of where we're at. So the citizen engagement piece is obviously the focus of that. But in the short term, what I've learned is that they are looking at working with the Littleton School District. They actually have reached out to them already. Once the school gets in session, it really is about October before they can actually start some kind of a program. The kinds of things they've been thinking about for them were some kind of competition around art, about their vision in the long run. Maybe poetry was even discussed by some in the school district. So the school district's already been engaged in this conversation, so that's kind of one level. The others that were having something similar with ACC, maybe a little higher level here conversation, but the intent is the same, is to try to engage that student population at the ACC as we try to create a vision there. So that's kind of roughly it.
And I guess...
As far as the younger demographic.
That still feels very limited to me. So I do, what's important for me here is that we do get representation in the vision process by a fair share of a younger generation, not just students either in college or in high school, but also younger generation that may be working in the service industry or younger generation that's professionals, et cetera. So I do think we need to be broader there to truly encompass the whole community. So in that level of scope, I'd be more comfortable with saying I could support the need for engaging this demographic.
Anybody else?
So I scribbled some things, so does it be somewhat...
You don't have to tell us.
So some observations. So some observations. The committee will be of no value if the council doesn't listen. And that's not an impugning of the council, but this is a really important piece. You can set up something really good. The council changes from time to time, but it's that listening that matters and then getting people of all demographics more engaged in my view. If the council listens to the committee, it'll listen to individuals in my view. So I'm one, I'd like us personally to try to engage more people of all ages, not just the demographic we're doing now. I think this connects to what you just said, Mark, asking each high school, but to create a group or utilize an existing group, whether it's the football team or the honor society or whatever, to solicit their thoughts on various issues that we might have a particular interest in or at least informing them because they may have interest on something that we had no idea they had interest on. And if there are other demographics we aren't hearing from, we need to get out there. We have some significant differences in sections of the city. There are people don't know we have a council. There are people I think don't know they live in the city of Littleton. They just know they live on their block and I don't mean that bad, but this is an issue that if we deal with it in the right ways, we're going to engage a hell of a lot more people, no matter what their age is and whatever. I think I said, I had some more here. And then like with ACC, there are several different ways there, but I think I said this once a month or so ago when we touched on doing this. Most of the students that I knew when I was teaching at ACC were so darn busy going to school. Many of them working full-time and going to school full-time and some of them having family full-time. So they were going around in circles. They didn't have time to do more. So it's in my mind, finding ways we can sort of have some kind of touch that if something really hits them, that they think we better darn sight know their views on it, that we can do that. Maybe that's, that's like a whole encyclopedia into one of those...
Couple scribbles on a piece of paper.
Kyle?
I agree with Peggy 100% there. I think we need to get more engagement from everyone across the board and I'm not saying that we shouldn't. I think this is just one approach to getting input from a group of citizens or non-citizens. I think one of the things in the document that is debatable is to have people that maybe don't live in Littleton but work in Littleton because I think it's important to hear from them. I think it's just an advisory group. And I think, I really do appreciate the comment about council has to listen and you know, I've heard, well, why doesn't the business chamber set something up or somebody else? You know, I wish there were other groups thinking about setting groups like this up, but I think if it comes from council, I think that sets the expectation that there's this structure that we've set to allow people to provide engagement. Clearly, 6:30 on Tuesdays does not work, so there needs to be a different option. And I think if council sets it up, council will listen, may not always agree, but at least it has that open ear rather than just saying, oh, these group of, you know, people are trying to tell us something. You know, there's not really that necessarily expectation that council's going to be open to hearing from them. And I, you know, I'm doing, I'm pushing for this because I think it's the right thing for the community and I think it helps us be proactive. These guys aren't my friends. I've only met with them for like a total of 45 minutes in person. So I don't know, it's not some thing I'm doing for some of my buddies there, but I think it's an important way to get involved and I think we should moving forward, think of other ways to involve different groups as well. I think that's quite important.
A couple of months ago, the two fellows whom I believe you're working with, Brian Carlson and Carl Thomasetti, came to a, well, we set up at a community conversation. It was a group that meets on one Tuesday, Thursday, to talk about Littleton issues, citizen involvement. They came and the idea was to have a forum and conversation of what the younger generation wants and needs from Littleton and what the older generation wants and needs from Littleton and to discuss how to meet in the middle. And it turned out that we were at the middle from the very beginning, that what they wanted, the young people, was exactly the same thing that the old people want. And we graciously referred to ourselves that way. And that was, number one, was affordable housing and number two was to clean up the traffic congestion and make it easy to get around. There was really nothing more to talk about, that we agreed on the main things. And that was, Peggy was there too, yeah. So a problem with giving special consideration to a special group is that that raises expectations that we will address their wish to have affordable housing and we will address their wish to have the traffic problem solved. And we don't know how to do those things or we certainly, I don't see either of those things on our agenda that we're going to address. And I can't imagine that they will come, those same people will come to council with a different list of wishes, of desires for those two things. Well, maybe they would change it, but it's the same two guys. So I don't think that it's going to change. So they come to us and they want these things and we still, we can't deliver, then what do we do? As far as accessibility, I hear from constituents mainly through email. It doesn't matter what time of day they send that email, in the sense I'm always available. And so I think that applies to this group as well, that they can email any of us at any time. Being busy at 6:30 at night in their life doesn't keep them from doing it. They don't. Maybe they don't feel welcome, but I think a lot of other citizens don't and maybe that's something we need to work on, on our outreach to everyone, not just this group, is to make ourselves seem more approachable. I think Peggy touched on that. If we set up special access for this group and I want to set up special access for every other group that wants special access, I think that's the only fair way to do it. If the homeless want special access, I can't imagine them getting that organized, but if they do, we need to do it, if we do it for this group, whatever group it is. I don't particularly, I don't see why one group needs more special treatment than others. But if we, as a group, think we need to give it to them, then let's give it to everybody. When I was the equivalent of the next generation, my dream job was to be a designer for Walt Disney Productions. So I got the credentials and I interviewed for the job and I got the job. The problem was I couldn't afford to live in Los Angeles for what they could pay me. And fortunately, they were kind enough to point that out to me. We want to hire you, but for what we can pay you, you can't afford to live here. So I had to say goodbye to Mickey and go back to Ohio. And we have some of that going on here too, where people, young, want to live here. A lot of people want to live here and they don't have the ability yet to live here. And we can't make that so for them unless we are willing to somehow raise, to subsidize their housing and to subsidize their transportation. And I haven't heard us talking about that sort of thing either. This is not something that is, that the council hasn't done. We have appointed... We have appointed, on a number of occasions, special tasks, task forces to work on specific concerns and issues. One, we even had a board, commission, I guess, that were really a board of businesses that were making recommendations and considerations from the business community. And they were making recommendations to council on certain issues. And there were times when council would refer a issue, or a, something that council wanted some, some deeper information on, just specific to that, that group. And they would mull it over for a period of time and then return back with a report on it. And I think that there was a value to that. And part of the value to that is that we, we do not have, you know, we just, the, people are busy. They are engaged in other things. We know that, we know that. Unless, unless you've got an Airbnb acting up in your neighborhood, you're probably never going to show up at a council meeting. I never would have showed up at a council meeting until something, you know, approached my front door, and then, then, you know, the rest is history. But that tends to be, it's not Littleton, it's, it's the country. It's the, it's the way that people live, it's the way that people are. And I think it's a good thing. For the most part, that's nice. I think it's a good thing that government is doing the job. We're doing our job to the point where the community does not have to keep an eye on us. But where we don't do our job is where we assume things, and where we, you know, we don't have that basis of information, we don't have a background in things. And I think that, I think that, I like the next generation, I like the title, next generation. I would, I don't want to limit it to millennials, because I don't think that, I think that's too limiting. I think next generation, under 40 years old, that's the generation that are, they're coming, they're raising their families, that's the next workforce, that's the next people that are going to buy houses. Those are the next people that will be, they're the ones that will have that larger income and spending that money. That is, those people make very different decisions. Those people live very differently. I agree with Carol, that the values of the groups are going to be very similar. The values are the high-quality neighborhoods, the transportation, the good housing that you can afford, fun places to go, interesting things to do, parks, shops. Those are core values, those are community values. And I think we have a, a good understanding of that. I think that this particular group is incredibly difficult to engage. I don't think that, that is a bad thing. I think that that is a challenge. Because it is, our Littleton report is the number one place where people get news and information in Littleton. I would challenge that if we broke that out, and I may get proven wrong when we do the study, if in fact they did any kind of age on that. But that the younger you get, the less that report is seen as such. I think, and, and that's okay, because that, there's an entire generation that is not growing up with that, that sort of method of getting information. 75% of information is communicated to the, under, younger generation, newer generation. Over 75%, it's, it's, they get it all off of this. It's not even computers, and it's certainly not mail, and it's certainly not newspapers. It's off a mobile device. And so I think that, that, you know, they have a different way of transporting it. You know, the Arab Indians issue we had tonight, that, there's an entire generation that, we didn't grow up with those. I can't look at you and say, we didn't grow up with those. But, you know, we grew up with a boarding house, maybe, or something like that. This is the next generation of that. We have, I don't, I think those are things that we have to get our hands around, get our arms around. I, I like the idea of this group. I like the idea of calling it next generation. I like the idea of 40 and under. I don't have a problem if people have appropriate reasons, appropriate tasks for these folks. This group, I think, with some of the things we're working on with code, I think definitely with what we're doing with the comp plan. And I got to say, Kendi Keast, you know, that's great. Littleton Public Schools, Art and Poetry. I really hope, I really hope that, I, I know we, it's fine reaching out to the schools, they're a stakeholder, but I, Art and Poetry, Comp Plan, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not seeing that. ACC, yay, ACC. They come, they go. They're here, they go to class, they go to McDonald's, grab their coffee, and they head back to home. The style, that is the pattern, that is a community college. And we know that, and that's not going to change. I think getting information from them is fine. I don't think this group is that. I think as we look at the budget and look at some of the things, what are we going to invest in? What are the priorities? I think having input from the people who will be the core of our community over the next years is, I think that would, that's going to be important. I think that's, giving this task for special assignments, assigned by council with specific directions, specific, this is what we want to have come from, this specific guidance, not a group that is a drain on staff. I do think that having a group of people that are able to deliberate and discuss and collaborate and share and argue on issues always produces a better result at the end. And to, that's one of the reasons why our tasks for, when we do a task force, that's one of the reasons why they're so successful, and we really do get value out of those. And so I think a lot of it is how we treat this group, how, what, what we give this group, how we support this group, what our expectations are, as Peggy said, that we actually listen back. So the success of this group is going to be largely dependent on how this is, what council does, how that's all, wants this group to function. I would suggest that there needs to be a much more tight recommendation as to what exactly this would be. How would we reach out, how would we get people to be on this task force? Will we interview them? I mean, I don't think this is something that we have to run, the council, to just mull over and deliberate for the next two hours here. So Kyle, I would, I would ask that if you are willing to put some thin thinking into this, we've got some, obviously, there's some resources out there where they have invented this thing, they are doing it, it is, and then just kind of pull some of that information. Karina's spoken to some folks in the metro area. Pull some of that together and really put this into a place where I feel like we can get our hands around it a little bit more, to be able to actually know what our next steps would be, what this would look like, how this would work. And if you tonight are asking for kind of a show of nod of heads that this would be something that we, you know, there's at least four of us that would be interested in moving it to that level, then will that, is that going to be okay for you tonight?
Sure.
Mark? Any concerns about that?
No.
Recognizing the limitations of staff, which you clearly do.
Yep, yep.
Maybe sit down with them and see how it could fit in with their...
Absolutely. Yeah, we've already given heads up. By the way, what I shared with you was the targeted approaches. There's many other opportunities for the younger people to participate, but it also collects anybody else that's in the, you know, in that grouping. So it could be older, younger, in between. But that was the target approach. So this would be a new level here that we've made Kendi Keast aware of.
Peggy?
Yeah, so, you know, I'm just sitting here thinking, I think there's three generations on this current council. I think, I think I know who the oldest is. I know who the youngest is. But I think we have three generations, which is really, really interesting. And they're very helpful, in my view. So I'm wondering if we put together this, that we have more cross-fertilization on it, which in one sense would help educate all directions, up, down, inside out, whatever. Because it would be, it would be a group that would have real dialogue and, and be really productive, I think. I was saying about the charter committee, which had quite a, a bit of variety on that. And nobody, nobody got killed in the process. No, teasing, but it was, it was a productive group. What I'm envisioning for this, with what you're asking, is a richer blend because of the age, which was a middle age, and maybe even an old, old fogey, or whatever. For having that, that, that cross-fertilization. Anyway, just a thought.
Peggy, is, is what you're suggesting is to have multiple ages, generations on this?
Yeah, I mean, you might have more of younger, but at least some others. And, and maybe then people who've been here longer, not brand-new people in the city. But anyway, I just think there's, there's a value in...
A value I see of that is what we saw at that community conversation meeting. I think everyone was surprised, both, both ends of the age spectrum, that we absolutely agree on what the issues were. And that, that takes the pressure, in a way, off of the younger generation of thinking they have a special problem. And it broadens it to it's a community problem, it's not an age problem. And that makes it more workable.
And it doesn't rule out individual, I mean, issues that are somewhat more age-related. They may or may not be.
And we don't know what they are.
You constitute, if you constitute a committee with, if you select people well that are going to talk and listen and delve and whatever, I think we get at the same thing, but we get a lot more power out of it.
For me, at the end of the day, and I will focus on the visioning process, because that's such an important directive of who we are today and will be in the future. And my, my ask is that as we go through the visioning process, it really is representative of our community today and who will be here 10, 20 years from now. So whether that means this group is 30%, that's 40, that's 10, I, I want some form of, we truly have represented and not overrepresented, one versus another, just by how we're engaging. And that, that's my ask. And that's where I perceive that in the past, we have not engaged the next generation at the same level that we have engaged other generations, just because of just behavior, right? Just, you know, the different generation. So it's more of, let's, let's be very deliberate about ensuring there is equity and representation of the folk community. If that means we have to do different things to engage one group, so that they do engage, then, then, that's where, that's where my head and my intent is in this. And again, that is a perceive of how it was done in the past. And I'm just, again, asking the consultants to make sure they're paying attention to that when they're bringing those findings to us.
Consultant?
The Kendi Keast.
Oh, no. Like I said, we got another consultant? Another consultant? Okay, let me, I guess I'm a little confused now, I have to be honest. Because what, what we were talking about was a committee who was targeted with younger people. And now this is being broadened out to represent, quite honestly, the entire spectrum. And if that, if that's the case, if that's what council wants to pursue, then, then this is taking on a very different view as far as the visioning process is concerned. Now you're talking more about some kind of a, what, steering committee for vision?
Yeah, I, I, council, I think, would be pouring this in. I mean, this is a, this is a recommendation for a new generation group. And this would, while I agree with Karina that our current visioning is, is our focus and is, is the future of what we're, we're doing, obviously. We've got, we've got a, it's part of our goals. I don't know that this group would be exclusive of doing that. I think that there's things, there's other things in the community, I think, that, that they could be engaged in on a, on a somewhat regular basis, whatever those may be, as appropriate. Regarding Councilmember Fay, I, I think that the, I think that the, there is a common thread that runs through the, all the generations of the concerns. But I think where it goes different is the way that there would be a solution. What, what a 20-year-old may see as a, as a solution to affordable housing may be very different than what a 70-year-old may see as a solution. Both of them are solutions, but they're both different. And I think getting those perspectives is good. My, and, and we'll try to wrap this, because we've got some other big ones coming up and some, some folks waiting to present. I would say if Kyle can come back with some sort of clarity on this and what this would sort of look like in, with what we've talked about in terms of the, the next generation, then it would be, I think at that point, we would need to make a, a full action. So, because I, we've got this charter in here for them and stuff like that, but I think we need to have some very strong recommendations as to what it is. How, how, who, where are we going to get them? How are we going to appoint them? When would they start to serve? What would be their scope of work? We need to really create that for them. What would that start to look like? That's, it's, it's not a little bit of work, it's, it's a lot of work. But I think we need to have that before we do anything else.
So the scope of work is one thing, but the time that we would hope they would complete it into?
Yeah.
Because that might affect somebody saying, well, I'm not going to be available then, or...
Well, I think a lot of that's in here with, you know, with the appointments of, they're having a certain for LPS and then a certain for out-of-school. I think it was sitting here that council would interview and appoint them. I mean, I think it also depends on number of applications. You know, if you have 40, and you got to narrow it down to 10, I think that's, you have an interview process. If you have 10 applications, there are 10 spots, there's really not necessarily, I mean, as much rigorous interview process needed. And so I think that, you know, moving more with, I mean, the, the problem that was identified, or that was mentioned that wasn't identified, is that there's a lack of engagement of this generation in the public policy process. And so I think rather than giving special access, this is not special access, this is council being proactive and saying, we want to do what we can to try to hear from you. And I think this is one step of doing, I say, hey, we're, we're not hearing from you. We want to hear from you. If we set up a group, maybe this works. There's no guarantee it's going to work anyways, but I don't think there's a, necessarily harm in trying to say, hey, we want to hear from this group, let's, you know, let's hear from them. Let's show them we want to hear from them.
Yeah, I think it says in the document, it's a two-year trial.
Yeah, it was a two-year sunset.
It's eight meetings. I mean, I, I think, and I would love to talk to you on the side about this sometime, about how I think we can make it work. I think as it is here, I, I, I don't like the plan that I see in front of me.
Okay.
But there's some things I would, and I don't want to talk about tonight. I think it's offline, you can do that. I, I think meeting four times a year is nowhere near enough for continuity to make it...
Okay.
To really get, so I think there's some things we can work on, whether it's, you know, involving what will it cost the city. We told the group tonight, who has a very serious problem in their neighborhood, that we can't deal with it for, you know, several weeks away, because we're so stacked, you know, busy right now. I think this, I think this is a little premature right now, but I think it, definitely want to hear from the young folks. And how we do it is, is how we got to determine it.
You have an idea?
Yeah, just another suggestion, if I may. I think, I don't think I did Kendi Keast any favors here, trying to describe how they target the younger group here. Yeah, well, I did. Some of the things they want to, and, believe me, they have tried and true methods here that have, are well-documented, are very effective. So that's, I feel bad that I probably didn't represent that well. But you are going to get a little more detailed briefing here next week. And so I think that would be an opportunity to kind of talk to some of the staff who've been working with him, so they have a better idea about how this kind of committee could fit in and, and perhaps add a value here that maybe is missing. So I do like the idea that council's kicking around here, where you might be able to use something like this for very direct input to the visioning. How you take it beyond that, maybe that's a different question, but...
I, I want it to be something that works. I don't want it to just be something trying, because it sounds good. I want it to work and add, be effective.
Carol?
I'm concerned about adding work. I heard you saying the possibility, you know, if we get 40 people, we need to narrow it down to 10. I know you're scared. But, but I don't want to add work to what we have to do. But I don't want to add work to what we have to do or that anybody else has to do without balancing deciding what's going to go. If this is going to come into our really busy agenda, then what goes? And I'm not saying this shouldn't come in, but we can't just cram it in and have more meetings. I'll rebel. And I'll have company.
Carol Fay rebelled. I think that, I think that was all really good input, good conversation, so we'll work on next steps with that.
So I would ask individual council members to send me comments on things, you know, meetings or how to select people. I don't necessarily want to see this keep going push-push because if it's going to be part of the visioning process, we probably need to do this in the not-so-distant future here.
Let's get it tightened up, get it back in front of us, and get it flushed. Get it tightened up to the point where we can show up on general business at our, but we don't have July 17th.
I know we got a difficult, yeah, beach alive, 17th is the next regular.
Regular, so we do have, we do have some time, so, okay. All right, good. So we get on that? Okay, the next is a presentation of the final draft.
We're good on that means...
That, Kyle, we're going to, if you have comments and additional to go ahead and give, talk to Kyle about it, and then it will come back in what this will look like in a general business, and we will...
Sometime down the road back, because I thought I just heard you two say a day.
It'll be, yeah, it will, the next meeting we have where we could do anything about it is July 17th, so it would either be...
Some point after that.
Probably after that, because that meeting's starting to stack up.
It's different for...
So probably in August, we will see it back in some shape. Meanwhile, Kyle will be working on it, and we can be working with him on it. Okay, perfect.
Thanks, Kyle.
So, thank you, Kyle, yes. This is the presentation of the final draft of the update of downtown design standards and guidelines. Dennis, are you going to be presenting?
I'm going to be initiating at least, and then our consultant is here to talk about it, so he should lead us through it.
Good evening.
Do you want to introduce yourselves?
Paul Bryant, another consultant.
Jerry's allergic to consultants.
Excuse me. So Paul is with a consulting firm that's actually in Geneva Live, so you've probably seen him around someplace.
So, yeah, we're neighbors. So we've been, and Jocelyn, who's not here, but we've been working on this for six months now. So it's nice to finally be in front of council and bring you up to speed, so.
Dennis?
Yeah, absolutely. We wanted to take you through just a few of it here and really focus more on questions for you to read through it, questions you might have about it. We met with planning commission and had a little bit of a series of questions from them, and are hoping to do the same, I think, with council as well. Before we go back to a planning meeting with historical preservation board, and they'll make a recommendation to planning commission, and the planning commission will opt per code, and then it comes to city council for ratification. We were looking at July 17th, I think we're going to be out, like everybody else, at that August meeting, probably is kind of what we're looking at.
What's up there?
Yes, that's right.
Has historic preservation seen it?
They have seen it, they've had a study session on it, planning commission's had a study session on it as well.
So to also just jump in and add a little bit more detail, we've had these tech groups, your tech committees, these sort of focus groups, which include, included two members of the start planning board, two members of the planning council, planning commission, local merchants here in the downtown core, as well as planning staff. So not only has historic seen the document up close and personal, but we've also had a meeting with them and a study session.
So we've through a lot of writing and rewriting and revisions to the earlier drafts with work done by the technical committee, also by staff, and then with comments by the historic preservation board as well as planning commission. And so we've been realizing that the draft that you have now actually incorporates most of those comments. We don't have the comments from the most recent meeting, which was with planning commission about a week ago. So we're combining, consolidating all those, and we'll take your comments, and then we'll put all those into the final draft that comes back. So the goal for the project, you may remember when I started looking at this, was we've got the design guidelines and standards that were developed for downtown, that had been in place for a long time. There'd been a lot of issues about, are they working, are they not working, are they achieving what we want to achieve? They've been very cumbersome, and the ones that we had were a very large document, a lot of duplication in that document. So the charge that we had was to try and shorten the document, manageable, eliminate the duplication, eliminate the jargon, because a lot of planning and architectural jargon in the document, and then update the photos and graphics, because we had a lot of photos that were either from other places or were clearly out of date with what we're at these days. The other thing we wanted to do was, council directed us to make these more enforceable, because there've been a lot of issues I think council's been frustrated with, I think planning commission's been frustrated with, where we weren't able to really use the design guidelines as effective as we liked and weren't happy with the product. So we ended up with a product that I think the boards and commissions and citizens have said, this is not what we anticipate, what we expect. And so the charge was to look at, when possible, convert what were guidelines that had some flexibility to them and were negotiable, the standards, which are not negotiable. So that's the charge that the consultants and the technical team have been working on. And again, I think major work through that. And so we've been, I think, very pleased with the kind of progress that's been made and what we've achieved in terms of getting this to be a much more manageable document. And that's kind of, we're heading next, we decided to get, trying to avoid policy issues. And the policy issues, as you get into this thing, really ends up being a lot of give and take in terms of, is this a policy issue, is this not a policy issue, is this really just an edit? And so we had a lot of that discussion with the technical team and with the staff. And we've come up with an argument that we're very comfortable with, is really looking at the editing and not the policy question. So we've set aside a whole list of issues that we think are policy issues that may need to be dealt with at a later date that weren't part of the initial charge. And so as we get into it, we have a lot more things that we could be talking about.
And Dennis, I would just suggest too, that we get, move into the meat, we've got maybe about 45 minutes, so before we get to the meat, then we have a presentation on it, so I think that, you know, we can read this, so.
Okay, good, all right.
Yeah.
All right. I think what we'd probably like to do is hear as much from you as possible. You've got the meat in front of you, you've had the meat in your packets. So the meat really is the current guidelines, standards, and we'd love to have questions from you in terms of, this is what you were anticipating, this is what you wanted to achieve. And Paul is an expert kind of taking us through this and helps us answer these kinds of questions, he's been great to work with on this. So if you want to go through, that's the easiest way to do it, rather than going through individual, we can go through individual sections if you prefer, or we can just open it up completely. So whichever you prefer, we can open it up by section, up the guidelines, and see if you've got questions about those things. Do you have a preference as to how you'd like to do that?
I would say, you guys are the designers on this, why don't you...
Why don't we start, and I'll do it, keeping in mind we've got 45 minutes, but how familiar was council with you?
We had 45 minutes.
So you came and went. How familiar was council with the currently adopted document, the 375-page document? Someone familiar?
Sorry?
Yeah, you know it's, right?
Which may have been a little embarrassing.
So just a quick synopsis, downtown as defined by the...
That's a great map, by the way. That's the best thing we have in the whole thing.
That's good.
Absolutely.
It's getting better. This will actually link live with GIS data and parcel information for the user when this becomes adopted. But for what it's worth, this is what is in the design guidelines, so what was adopted previously, and we did not change any of that, we did not change the subareas or any sort of policy, as it were.
Speaking of this, so what was the discussion about keeping the subareas stacked? I mean, I'm not disagreeing with them, but I mean, things...
So, James, and this goes back to Dennis's point about sort of a subsequent phase to this effort, there's a lot of discussion about the subgroups. And I don't, so just so the folks that are not familiar with subareas or suburbs, the original 375-page manual essentially broke downtown into eight different characterized pockets of downtown. As opposed to one holistic downtown, there were eight pockets, and that's still how it remains. And we've tried to sort of put our arms around it and make it a little more cohesive, but these are all, so we're sitting right here in subarea one. The, none of that has changed. Now, we have talked about a phase two where we can consolidate this into a new vision of what the next 50 years of downtown is. Maybe downtown Littleton is just a different sort of flavor, right, as opposed to this chopped up. Also, in subsequent phases, increasing the downtown boundary to encompass all the way up into Bellevue. There's some vacant parcels up there that probably relate more to downtown than otherwise. So to answer your question, council member, it was on the table initially and quickly rushed aside because it was too much policy. Really, it wasn't, it wasn't the charge of the, of the, I guess it was an October meeting that sort of issued and ushered us in to make this change. So with that said, back to the subareas. So the original document, 375 pages, had eight individual characterized pockets of downtown Littleton. There was a lot of similarity in terms of architectural features, in terms of landscape, in terms of frankly, many, many, many repetitive design issues that were sprinkled all about. So what we did is instead of having eight different chapters of subareas, we created basically eight, or four chapters of design, architecture, so urban design and site planning, architecture, then landscape architecture, and then signage. So there's four. And then within each of these categories, it's broken out into subareas. So, and we can get into the menu a little bit more, but the meat of it is, if you were to flip here to, you know, the green section.
Is anyone else to a cup?
And if you don't, that's okay. The point is, is that within this section, you can identify what subarea you're in based on this map and understand what specific standards relate to your subarea and what is general to all subareas. So for instance, in building use and orientation, general standard, the ground floors of commercial buildings, ground floors of commercial building frontages shall be primarily occupied by pedestrian active uses, residential, commercial, or otherwise. And what that's saying is that we don't want, as a city, a parking garage with parked cars or warehouse with boxes or, you know, self-storage. So that's general across the board. And then on down the line, so it goes to, you know, like I said, urban design and site planning, so that relates to the initial design. For a designer to come in, they would look at this and like, okay, this is how I can site the building in the setbacks and the property lines. And then you peel the design documents a little bit further and you get into architecture. So how does that relate to the vertical design of the building? And again, it all is relating to each subarea. So some subareas have different standards. Main Street has a different flavor, obviously, architecturally within the city than this residential pocket in subarea four. So in here, it will clearly identify the differences between those two and what's required, et cetera. And again, so the designer already flips into the book, understands how the building needs to be sited, and then can focus on the architecture, how it needs to look vertically. As you peel back further, then you get into landscape architecture, which is fairly thin compared to the original manual or the original design standards. And that's because Littleton already has an adopted landscape architecture manual. And so this really pushes the designer to look at that other manual. And so in a future iteration, the council and the city could revise that manual, we don't have to worry about this because that, this is just telling it to do that. And then finally, signage, which is a hefty section, just because there's so many nuances in the vast array of signage. So with that organization, so it helps the designer a little bit, you know, and it sort of reads like a book when you flip the map and you go into your subareas. And I think planning commission has asked for some more history, so we're going to add a history section of Littleton, which is very important, I think, if you were to read this as a sort of, you know, if you were working, an architect in Wyoming and knew nothing about Littleton, you could get a flavor for the city, get a flavor for the design of the regimented axial alignment of the library to the courthouse.
The other thing that, along with what Paul's been saying, when we talked about not dealing with policy, we updated the existing character section for each subarea. We did not touch the section we were talking about, desired character, because we really thought, that's a policy question, that's a downtown plan upbeat question, that's really a lot more detail than we want to get into here.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And so that's sort of the juggle that we had as the staff, as the tech group and the consultants, was really, how do you weigh the difference between policy and not? And I think a good example is, is when we looked at finestration, architectural, architectural design, it wasn't really defined. So how do we define, how do we want a material to transition on the building as a city? Do we want a brick to just be stuck on the face, or do we want it to wrap the corner and go back a certain distance and make it feel a little more massive and a little more purposeful? That's the stuff that we touched, is trying to make the decisions more purposeful. And then the things that were arbitrary, that had no frame of reference and were frankly unenforceable, we cut because it was just fat in the document and it wasn't necessary. So really, what we tried to do is leave the policy changes to a subsequent effort, but really make this document more enforceable and more in line with the strategy, you know...
We wanted to clarify what we thought it was not clear, what the intent was, tried to expand on it when we kind of understood what the intent was. And dealt a lot with the development review team, the planners who do development review on a regular basis, invited in some architects as well to talk about that in terms of, does this make sense, is this understandable, is this something you can actually implement? So it went through all of those iterations as well.
Paul, one question I had, on a lot of these, you talk about current character, desired. Was there at any point in any of these study, or subareas, that you had a large deviation from what was currently there to what would be?
So really, the, I would, there was no large deviation. I would, I could, I would definitely attest to that. Now, within the overall scheme and plan of currently in the document, subarea one is mandated to be modern and contemporary architecture, whereas subarea two is supposed to be more craftsman, historical, gabled roofs and houses. So we left, per Dennis, the character alone, and so there wasn't necessarily a deviation, but some of the arbitrary, unenforceable language, like subtle light colors should be used. What does that mean, right? I mean, black can be subtle and light and say, so it can yellow. And so that was, that was a deviation, I would say, in terms of getting into that.
I think the other deviation we were, we've seen more recent projects, and the sense was perhaps that they aren't as consistent with what the intent of the guidelines was and what the standards would say, is suddenly when we start talking about being consistent with existing character, you know, what does that really mean? And so that's a challenge as well, I think, is the existing character has changed for some of the subareas.
That's absolutely true. And then going to this subsequent effort, is, yeah, we have an existing character, but is that really, is that really the vision? And a good point is that we've got, you know, this is not zoning, right? This is not the zoning manual. So we have certain land use policy in effect that allows for multifamily dense development, but yet the design standards and the character don't necessarily enforce that and encourage thoughtful, multifamily dense design. But again, we were very careful in not stepping on the zoning land use code toes because we wanted to make sure that these things married with one another. I don't know if that answered your questions.
Yeah, that's... Yeah, that's Karina and then Pat.
Yes.
Thank you. I have a couple things.
Yes, please.
Okay. So, when you developed the kind of checklist at the end and the standards, was that addressing the desired character or the existing character? So, these are the standards to achieve desired character or existing character?
So, the, the reality of the original guidelines was existing character was really desired, to keep the existing character. So, there wasn't a mandate within the original document adopted in 2006, in other words, to take a residential pocket and turn it into a commercial contemporary pocket. None of that was there.
The premise has always been that there was trying to be a reflection of what the historic character of that area was, even if every building in that area would change over time, you could still sense what that neighborhood or that subarea was.
So, the guy, so the standards are to try to achieve the existing character from a design element that's not necessarily enforceable. So, the existing character may change as a result of zoning that is not aligned with our desired guidelines.
So, that's a mouthful, but I think the reality is that in this zone district, and I think that's correct, but so let's say that this is our five, I believe. If, if there was an overhaul of zoning and that was become, became a mixed-use zone district, for instance, then yes, these would not be in alignment anymore.
But the good thing is we now have a document that's a better starting point to identify that and determine which things now become a policy decision to say, this guideline, we now want to be reflected in a way that it is enforceable either through zoning or overlay or some other various tools. So, we can at least start reading a document and understanding better.
Exactly.
Where the next step.
And we've, we've been intentional to keep track of those as we got through the process in terms of what things we see as future, you know, future phases.
And just to add on to that one more point is that, so really, the guidelines are the standards, whether it's in Littleton or any jurisdiction that has these overlays, the scale, the scale, mass, and proportion of the architecture, whatever it is, should would remain the same. You know, there's different flavors of architecture throughout time, right? And that's okay, that, that sort of benefits the fabric of, of the city. But the overall character, you know, in other words, this isn't Pasadena where everything has to be clay tiled roofs and that sort of thing. This, Littleton has got a variety of architecture and that's the character. And I think we want to encourage that as long as it's, Main Street is two stories and then a third story that's stepped back. I mean, that's going to be like that in part two.
I'm going to finish my other two comments before I was going to jump in. I love the beginning where it says, "Terms related to compliance shall, should, and may be considered." I really like that, you know, that being called out, although, and should sometimes means shall, that, I don't like that. So, I like it that it's here, but then it's hard to catch as you're reading the document. So, the shalls and the shoulds and the may be considered all kind of jumbled together. I would love to see that be a lot more visible and easy to pick up on than...
Is it shall or should?
Or should, and you lose.
Right.
So, maybe think about if there's a better way to present, here are the things you shall. It's a checklist, but I know people look at information different ways, but I love that it's here. It just got lost for me as I was reading through the document. I appreciate your attempt to minimizing jargon, but I still don't, I still don't understand everything that's in there. That's all I'll say. Pat and then Peggy.
On the sign piece, did you guys take into consideration what we just passed as City Council or New Sign Ordinance?
Or is this? Yeah. We did make some changes at the last minute to that, exactly.
Okay. And then how about the public comments that I've been reading through? Were those then taken and amended? I guess there were some, you know, typos. I mean, there was a bunch of, you know, ancient words and stuff.
Ongoing, and we still have new comments from Planning Commission that we incorporate as well. Then we want to take the comments from the mind and incorporate those two.
Right. Okay.
Going back to the public comments, how involved was residents in the design process?
We didn't, we had two, three, no, two open houses, I guess. Two open houses plus we put the text online and got comments that way as well. We didn't specifically target residents, but we did mail invitations to both open houses, to every property downtown. So, specifically inviting them to those two opportunities as well as informing them to comment online as well. So, there was, other than, we weren't sure what a better system would be, but we did, we did definitely consider them.
We did have a fair turnout. I think the first, our first community meeting, 50, maybe 35 to 50.
Yeah, it was pretty representative, I think. We did have residents in those, both open houses, so.
And, yeah, I think the second open house was a little lighter. More, more of the folks that were interested were really in the development design realm, not, not citizens that were interested in what was going on that came to the second meeting. And then, as far as online, I mean, I don't know if they were there or not. I mean, did they, did they attend or not?
No attending, we don't have.
To kind of go to, Karina's kind of messing with zoning. And so, just to clarify where this sits in the process, so someone, say, wants to redevelop a, first, they go through, their plan goes with zoning, and then they have to go through the design guidelines here and say, yes, everything we want to do here, check marks to everything that says shall. And so, they have to sit through with, do they have to, who is the onus on to show that to staff to say, the developer is saying, hey, this is what I've done, or both ways? Staff went, hey, this plan kind of doesn't fit with this here.
It's kind of a combination of the two. Typically, there is, we, in some cases, ask the, we go through and complete the checklist themselves. At the time, and then staff reviews that as well. So, it's a combination of the two, going through and talking about and negotiating in some pieces.
Now, the, to that point, though, there really wasn't a cohesive checklist for the guidelines and standards, which is something that we were charged to do, which is what, what this is. So, this, this is an instrument that frankly, a layperson could use to make sure that a plan was, was fulfilled within, you know, all the subareas.
Just trying to figure out a way that works that you can go through and say, yes, every, for let's say Zone 3, everything, there's a mark in there. We went through, we read every single one of these, and we comply with it.
Been using checklist for the last couple of years, it's been very helpful to do that. And we've been sending those out, working, having them, do the initial review of it and explain when they fit and when they don't fit. And then we, staff and three, they've been able to do that, too, so.
Into that, I mean, this is, this is very common within the industry, and most jurisdictions will have this type of overlay. So, most designers are familiar with having to go through this procedural design effort.
We made it easier though, right?
Yes.
That was the goal.
I just have one last thing for, it's probably a bigger discussion than just this, but say for like a redevelopment of, and it's an issue all across the metro area, our slot homes. And, you know, the idea of where they're oriented, are they oriented to the street? And, you know, looking through here, you know, I see facades oriented, front facade and main entries toward the streets and public space. So, would that preclude slot homes that are not, have any facing, or would there need to be other issues?
Exactly. So, there's a couple of things at play here within downtown Littleton, and one of which is somewhere in the distant past, the alleys were abandoned, which is a tragedy, frankly. And I would, if, for the council to somehow create it, some way to get the alleys back, whether it takes 100 years, we need to give the alleys back, 200 years, we have alleys in the city. Without alleys, someone buys a mid-block parcel with no alley, and you force them to front it with residential entrances or otherwise and not have a curb cut for parking. You've made that land non-developable. So, in here, we've encouraged, and when there is an alley present, we've required that entrances, it says, I think the specific language is more than one face of the street. So, that would, that would, and it's similar to what Denver passed just two weeks ago, three weeks ago. Now, there is language in here. If there is not an alley present, that the planning staff has the ability to sort of understand the predicament. However, it's been encouraged that if you buy a 40-foot wide parcel, really, and you really want to put multifamily on there, you know, why don't you try to procure that parcel next to you and get an 80-foot wide parcel and really think about this thoughtfully? Obviously, that's tough to do.
It gets into the longer-term zoning issues really, in terms of how do you encourage that? How do you encourage larger assemblages so you can actually have simpler access to properties, that type of thing?
So, the, the long answer is, or the, I gave you the long, the short answer is, with alleys, slot homes are pretty much, we, we've tried to abandon. But without an alley, then that, you know, the entrances on the side and garage doors on the front will...
You said try, so I just want, I mean, is it a shall or a should?
Well, it's, it's, it's...
A shall would be possible.
Yeah, if I was planning staff, I might turn it away. So, but, so it's, it's up to them.
Written as a should, not a shall?
Let me, let me, let's, let's pick up this specifically.
That's the voice that I'm making, right?
No, it's really important because I think, when you go down the street in Littleton, in downtown Littleton, you know, we want a street wall, we want front doors, we want, you know, we want that. We don't want driveways and we don't want garage doors. That's not what we want. But, you know, in some, in some cases, you know, we're sort of dealt with, with that hand, but let me, let me pull up that specific language. Give me, give me one second.
Go to Peggy's question. Does it might affect what I say?
Yeah, it's going to, give me one second.
We're losing our audience here.
I know. Well, it's, it's good to be here.
My recollection is it's a shall, and then I think has a bit of a caveat at the end, truly, if it's possible. So, I think, and we'll find out more, as Paul finds it.
On page 1, we'll go to page 29, it says, "Street-facing facades shall be designed to be the primary facades and shall include components of..." Talks about commercial building frontages.
Thank you for your question.
It's a larger issue.
Okay.
I think it's larger.
Okay.
Mark, so some of these things that become policy questions, how do you bring those forward to us? You don't have to answer now, but I think that we understand what are some of the policy issues so that we begin to plan to get in front of it as opposed to react to them?
I think for me, the question would be, how does it fit into the vision of the COT Plan process? So, if you identify some of these policy issues, do you want to deal with them sooner or let that whole vision in COT Plan process play out? Because I mean, my guess is that that process will inform some of these other issues in the downtown specifically.
Let me hand out to kind of what was collected. This, this set has a couple of different things on it. The first thing is just what the tests were for, that is a Phase 1 test, what this process was. And then the second one is what we heard from Planning Commission, make 30 of the study session with them. And the third section on this, on page 2, is possible Phase 2 tasks. And then we actually had, had Phase, possible Phase 3 tasks, which is beyond that, gets into zoning and, and projects.
Yeah, so, and, and so now that I'm recalling this debate that we had in our committee, but, so, page 31.2.5, and again, I want to, I want to preface this with saying that, you know, the fine line between policy and sort of turning guidelines to standards. But this, "In residential buildings, at least some of the residential entrances shall be directly accessible to the street." So, there's, there's a lot of, and then it goes on to, "The remainder of residential entrances accessible to the street from a court or passageway," which what that, if you think about a slot home, you know, especially in downtown, they've got one door that faces the street, and then there's a drive aisle that accesses a bunch of garages, right? So, there's just one. So, in this case, per, if you're familiar with the Denver City Council that passed a couple of weeks ago, you know, they want to divide it, so there's, you've got a street fray faced with multiple entrances, and then often it comes in on the alley where the court, the drive aisle is. And so, in this case, if you read between the lines, so in residential buildings, at least some of the residential entrances, so more than one, shall be directly accessible to the street. So, the street wall, sidewalk, is the remainder. So, if you could put six units on your zone lot, two would probably face the street in this case, and then the four could be sort of the slot configuration with the remainder of residential entrances, which would be those other four that I just mentioned, accessible to the street from a court or passageway. And so, a court would be a driveway in this case.
The one thing that we haven't dealt with, and Denver hasn't either, is the distance between the buildings, the wings of the slot. Our design when Denver did their zoning initially was the idea that it was going to be a more traditional zone, where you actually had usable, you know, yard, a common yard between the buildings. We haven't dealt with that, they haven't dealt with it yet. That's really a policy question, I think, for us. It's really a Phase 2 probably in terms of what does that mean? Do you have the width between the buildings be somehow related to the height of the buildings? What's the ratio with there that they actually look at?
Exactly. And just to add on to that, I know we're 40 minutes and came and left, but a good example took to my 40-foot wide zone lot, okay? So, general proportions of a residence are very uniform. In other words, a bedroom 12 by 15 or 12 by 12, that sort of thing. Living room 16 by 12, you know, those sorts of things. Generally speaking, a townhome could, could be anywhere between 16 feet 8 inches and 24 feet, but 16 feet 8 inches is ideal. You know, that's pretty typical for urban living. So, if we want to encourage, if we want to encourage this street wall, then in zoning, we could say that you have to have a certain zone lot width in order to create these density. In other words, a 40-foot zone lot width does not afford you the right to do high density. You have to have a 60-foot, which would allow you to have a setback, two residential units, and a drive aisle to get you behind the residential units to create the court, and then a setback. And so, those are the proportions that Dennis was talking about. Because in 40, what you're, what we're getting in the city now is that you're just, you know, you're getting designers that are cramming them in there and laying them all, you know, the wrong direction. They're, you know, and, and we're turning our back on the rideaway, turning our back on the street edge. And this is back to the overall comprehensive plan in terms of designing the public rideaway downtown. We need to have, what is a, what is a sidewalk? What is the street going to be? What are we doing? What are we going to do in 100 years? And right now, we've got streets in downtown Littleton with no sidewalks. None. That's not acceptable for this city, I don't think. And I'm a consultant, but I work next door. I live, I live across, I live in Arapahoe Hills, right across from Goddard. I went to Arapahoe High School. I was born at Rose Hospital. I grew up in Littleton, so I have a passion for the city. That's where this is coming.
I'm sorry to the show. Rose, you're a consultant.
Yeah, right. But anyway.
It wasn't this project.
It's still Paul, you're a consultant. It's still Paul.
Yeah, that's right. So, policy, and I'll get off my sort of architectural philosophy train here. Sorry.
So, I got several questions, thoughts, observations, unless you're quite willing to hear them. I think our, what we have to deal with is, do we want to densify downtown? Do we want to try to preserve pretty much the long-term historical character, even though it's changed a bit? Besides that, we want something in between or whatever. Personally, I don't want to have, I don't want to densify downtown. If we want to have 4,000 units someplace or even 1,000, I'd like to put them someplace else and, and give people, you know, some kind of shopping cart to just take them downtown or whatever.
Not District 2, by the way. I'm putting my District 2.
No. See, so he didn't want them there, but downtown, what people, you know, that don't live here talk about, and people who do live here generally call the small-town charm. So, whatever we do, in my mind, we have to preserve that, and not all of this is doing that, in my mind. And, and I think we might need to... And, and I think we might need to put you guys back to work here. So, I had, I had some, you know, thoughts with this, with the height, the height restriction and absolute height restriction than anything that hasn't already been built downtown, because we can't knock off something that some people have not been real happy about, but it's there, so...
I think, I think all those policy questions.
But a height restriction, a walkability goal, which doesn't, or, or in a wheelchair, I mean, something or other that, that is encouraging that people apart, and historical feel without creating false historists by saying, "Oh, it's got to look like this." No, so you don't do that, but it glows in some way, so...
I agree 100% to, 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 to most of that.
So, I'm sorry.
100% to most of it. The reason why I have an oxymoron there is because of this, 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 this station right here, and when the city put light rail and light rail stop here, we sort of embraced some form of density. However, I think keeping the charm and character of the city is important forever, which is sort of what this is trying to do.
Why, why do you say the language is important?
Well, I just feel that, at least, you know, per our, the previous conversation, we talked about the millennial generation and the younger generation, you know, antecdotally, I lived in Portland, Oregon for five years without a car. I just rode light rail everywhere and I used, it was Zipcar at the time, and it was, it was, I didn't need to, it was dense because we all lived, you know, this multifamily, it was public transportation, it wasn't...
And yet, you left.
Yeah.
And now you have a car, maybe two cars.
Yeah.
So, I, I go a mile from the light rail.
Don't worry, someone took a spot.
Any place that we can go on the light rail, so, we often walk the mile to the light rail, right? Because we're still young enough to walk, at least unless it's icy, but, so, I don't think some of what we're talking about, you know, excludes what I'm saying. So, I, height, the materials, setbacks, adequate setbacks, more green, even if we have to take some portions of blocks and make many green tree areas or whatever. Maybe more of that. Now, whether that means that the city's going to have to buy some properties or portions of properties, but what we're talking about, in my mind, is the long-term character and actually viability of this city and, and wanting to get people to come to downtown, because they come now because they love the charm. Once it loses the charm, they're not going to go to a lot of places they now currently come to.
And I think those issues are the issues that were the challenge as we were going through this, is that a lot of those get into policy questions in terms of what, and what the existing zoning is, and what the plan is, and what we want to do downtown is the future. And yet, we were kind of limited in terms of, we don't deal with policy, just deal with what we've got, deal with existing zoning. So, until we get to, if, if there's a decision to go forward, to do another phase, then I think we start with existing zoning and what's the interpretation of that, so... But I think you're raising absolutely all the issues that have been talked about by technical team and staff, and went through this in terms of what to deal. Are we allowed to do with what we've got at this point?
I'm thinking we need some more conversation on this and some direction and even, as they said, you see any lights in the centers.
Their, their task was not to rewrite, because their task was to clean it, so... All right, hold on. We've got Jerry.
I just want to point out that we have less than an hour until 10 o'clock.
Okay. These guys up till 9:15, and then we have the next one until 10:00. So, Jerry, and then Kyle?
Sure.
Okay, Jerry.
I, I think you did what I was hoping to get. Is it a perfect document? No, it's, it's always going to change, anyway. So, I, I think you did do, by just even identifying the subareas and, and, and at least we have something to look at, so this is what it is today, and now whether or not it's ever going to change, maybe yes, maybe no, but this is what we have. When I look at the Highlands, you can do the same thing with the Highlands area, and then you put in those new designer-type buildings. Those designer buildings aren't sitting empty, someone's buying them right up. So, things do change, like them or not, and they don't necessarily look like maybe our subarea 4, but they still fit in and someone still buys it and it, and it brings the neighborhood up, it's one way or another. So, I, I think you did a great job. I think, Mark, this is, this is getting us closer to that comp plan.
And, and I'm, sorry, I got this cold from my gran...
Is that a cold?
I know.
Let's get a big bubble.
Jerry don't have a cold right now, so I get me out of my 40-jeween year, but if I may, I do want to comment on the, Karina raised the question first here, but, yes, I appreciate the point. You know, the council did instruct this team here to convert from guidelines to standards and try to simplify this process. Now, the vision of the comp plan to code was an attempt here to recognize that we've got to change lots of things in our code. One, of course, working through the vision, policy direction in the comp plan, and eventually the code. We recognize that there are certain topics that, quite honestly, the council will want to take out of sequence, and I'm not surprised that you may identify several things coming out of this effort that you don't want to wait. No problem. So, we just need to recognize that, and I think my intent was to come before the council periodically with a work plan, and you get to change that. You guys confirm, change, and set that direction.
Good plan. Kyle?
I was just, see, I, I like the documents, great, and I'm glad that we have the standards, it's clear, I think it'll be used well, and I think a lot of the concerns that Peggy mentioned probably fit better into zoning than the code rather than to the design guideline. This is design of architectural and landscape, not necessarily the zoning issues, so, yeah. Good.
Excellent.
One more second. Yeah, you guys.
Okay. And, so, let me ask you guys, are you, so, when are you meeting, your next meeting is with historic preservation?
Correct.
When is that?
It's on the 17th.
So, if we have some comments and some things, because I, I would actually like a hard copy, because then I can do some markup on that, and then, when would you like to have those back from us?
We, so, the 13th, so a week from tomorrow, we have to provide the packet to HPP.
And you want to incorporate any comments?
Yeah, so really, I'm, my team is holding off until Monday, the morning, Monday morning, to try to get this done in three days, to incorporate everything else that's trickling in. So, Monday morning?
At the latest. And, and I think, nothing super, you know, rewrite, but just, and I don't know, but if I have any changes or not, I just want to know what that window is, was there any other questions?
Send those to Jocelyn at this point.
Jocelyn, okay. Any other?
Send them, actually, don't we send them to Mark, who sends them to Jocelyn?
Sure.
I mean, that, I mean, isn't that the process? We should, we should, we should always copy Mark.
Well, it's a hard copy, so...
You can, I think in this case, you can send it to Jocelyn.
You're to Jocelyn.
She's very good about it.
With a copy to you, though, it's, it's...
Mark, not on that.
So, you've said something here, do we need to send it again?
The what?
You've said something here, do we need to put it?
No. I just captured it.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think all of those points were well taken, but a lot of the, I mean, we can, we can have a cup of coffee and talk a lot, right? I agree with a tremendous amount. But, yeah, so, we meet with HPP and then Planning Commission, and then we eat with council again August 8th, I believe, or 9th. Now, for what it's worth, if the council wants to, to read a hard copy, we do have the comments from Planning Commission, which have not been incorporated into this document.
That's what we handed out tonight.
So, you have the planning commission files, okay. Just, so you might want to read that, before you read that, just because it might...
So, the what?
I have four or five.
This is, the one we have on here is planning incorporated? No?
Uh, no, the one...
This is planning?
That one is planning. I have a correction from last week, correction, yes.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, I'll take a hard copy. Thank you very much, Paul. Nice job.
Thank you very much, Council. It's going to be a good evening.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Three minutes to spare. We get the consulting to work tonight.
That's right.
I love your passion for that.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we should compliment Paul and his firm here. Lots of great comments, and we're coming in about the approach here. They've had a tough task here. This is converting guidelines to standards is no easy feat here, especially after where we've been, so...
Yeah, well, I think it's a good start. I think the comprehensive plan, I mean, I think the, the opportunities for the walkability are so vast. The river, all the way to the Rose Garden, I mean, you know, Little's Creek, I mean, it's, it's just amazing what we can do with the right...
All right. You got to get out.
Thanks, Dennis. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. Good job.
Thank you.
May we see it?
Please.
Who else? Well, this topic should wake everybody up.
See, the best thing...
Yeah, as long as it doesn't depress me.
Yeah, well... Ready? Yeah. Are you going to start with the PowerPoint presentation? Yes. And you're not going to read it, though, right?
I hopefully won't read it that much. Maybe just a little bit. Good evening, Council. Happy to be here. Glad we're able to talk about the principles of sound financial management and fiscally-constrained financial plans. Interesting topic, I'm sure, for all. We have two things that we want to discuss tonight with you, the first of which is the principles of sound financial management, sound financial management, and then the second that we're going to kind of tie that into is the fiscally-constrained financial plans. We're going to talk about where we ended in 2017 so far, and I have to put a caveat that 17 is still unaudited until we have a final opinion by the auditors, which we hope to have in the next couple of weeks. So, I do have to note that. So, we'll talk about the general fund and the capital projects fund, and then we'll look at some five-year projections for both of those funds. Those are the two largest funds for the city. What are principles of sound financial management? This is something that we kind of have currently. We have a number of policies throughout the city. We have a finance policies, debt policies, revenue policies, and what we're doing is we're asking council to allow us to bring a resolution to adopt the current ones, the draft that you have in your packet this evening. Like I said, we already have some of these assembled, but what this does is it kind of combines them all into one document so that you can go to this one area if you have any questions on financial management issues or principles that the city's going to adopt. Why do we want to have these? Various reasons. We have a responsibility to the citizens to account for the public funds. We want to manage those finances wisely, and we want to make sure that we have adequate funding for future services or current services that we're currently providing. One of the important things about principles of sound financial management is it can enhance the financial health of the city. We want to plan for the future. We want to maintain five-year financial plans so that we can make changes as necessary in the downturn, or if we have years where we have some excess revenues that we might want to look at spending on maybe some long-time occurrences. The other thing that I think is important is by having these principles together in one area, if the city were to ever look at maybe issuing debt, maybe some COPs or geobonds or revenue bonds, one of the things that lenders will look at is how financially stable are we and what principles do we have in place to mitigate any future occurrences, downturns, or something that might impact that fund balances? They look at that across all funds. So, having these principles will certainly help that in the future, if the city were to look at something like that. As I mentioned, we already have some of these policies in place, but we've kind of enhanced them. We've added some things to the draft that you have currently. One of the things most important is the five-year long-range financial planning. We've always talked about it, and what these, these principles will do is it will actually incorporate it into our budget process, and what it will require is that council review that and actually adopt that as part of the budget annually. We'll offer some presentations during the year, some updates, because it does change, you know, fairly periodically, but it does incorporate that into our actual financial plan and our budget process, which is something that we've not formally had in the past. The other thing that it does is it incorporates an annual review of potential revenue sources. We taught, we, we do review our fees annually, but this will, again, formalize this process through these principles and through the budget, the budget process. The one thing that I think Littleton historically has not taken advantage of is federal, state, and local grants. We do get some, and, and we're very thankful for the ones we do get, but we're certainly looking to leverage some funds, especially at the federal level, related to traffic, specifically Santa Fe and some of our major thoroughfares. So, one thing that we want to have is some grant guidelines for that. We have an internal policy that we follow, but again, this will formalize the policy so that we're sure to have these in place should we get those federal grants.
When you say grants for our streets, like Santa Fe, Santa Fe's not ours.
It's not, but we do have a matching requirement if we were to expand or add any enhancements to Santa Fe, because it is in Littleton. I don't know if Mark wants to kind of touch on that, but...
I think what we'll find when we pursue this through Dr. Cog is that we will have to be the agency that kind of leads this. Of course, the state and SEDO specifically would participate in that, but we do be the one who would push the project forward. For example, Mineral and Santa Fe, if we wanted to do that interchange or that intersection, we would apply, and we would get the grant, we would execute. So, I think that's why these guidelines, in my opinion, are pretty important. I've always been concerned since I've been here about how well council gets involved or informed about a grant. One of the things I don't like is for staff to somehow do this, and then we come to you after we've been awarded. I'd rather have you make the decision early that you even want to apply, so that when it, if it does come in, then we know what to do with it. So, it's kind of principles like this, I think we're trying to establish.
So, Debbie, help me, and maybe Jerry, I think the first few years we were in council, we were more involved in that, then we somehow got more, well, we weren't, whatever, and so now, I mean, I think this is great that we would be more engaged with that.
I think some of the grants, there's some grants you don't want, and then there's some grants you do want. We did have a number of grants for the police that brought in some, some equipment services and stuff like that, that it wasn't one of those things where, well, here's the money now, but then it's going to cost you a fortune going forward to take care of it. It would, so, we did have a number of those things early on, and that was also the economy, the municipal economy was allowing more grants than it does, yeah. So, and then I, I think what Mark is saying, you know, I think that to have council have a, have an idea of what those look like prior is, thank you. Council's strategy of which ones we go after, like which ones are aligned to our strategy as municipalities, there's, you know, there's so many, so to speak, but like, we have to be very targeted and know that we can fulfill the obligations as well.
Agreed, and eventually I'd like to get that strategy actually implemented into the capital project fund, for example. So, if we are pursuing those, I'd like to place them in the appropriate year.
Yeah. Yeah, the intention of the policy in here is that when we want to seek a, a grant, and if it's more than, and I put the amount of 50,000, if it's more than $50,000 for the city, then we would want to present to council any future costs related to that grant, because sometimes they require you, if it's a personnel grant, they require you to maintain staffing for an additional two, three years. So, we want to make sure that we understand any future costs or ongoing costs related to the grant, should we get it, but the intention is that we provide all that information to council and seek your approval or support for that application. Now, I will warn you, there's going to be some times when just for the sheer deadline of a grant, that may not happen, but in that event, we've allowed for the city manager to go in and approve the application, but then at the next possible time, we will bring the information to council.
Under the scope, or these principles of sound financial management, just as we're establishing grant guidelines, is...
establishing grant guidelines, is this a place that we would also add, you know, establish, you know, our economic, like incentives for economic?
You could.
That is actually a section I'm trying to say. Yes.
Yes.
So council has approved an economic incentive policy, and so we've incorporated that into this.
So that would be part of this?
Yes.
So it is one of the principles?
Yes, yes. The other thing that's included in this that we haven't had previously is to have a periodic cost of service study. Currently, we are engaging an entity to provide that service for us currently. We haven't done that in the past, and so in our principles, we've allowed for that to happen periodically, and it'll be required to happen periodically. And typically, it's every three to five years, but that certainly is up for council discussion.
A lot of these are saying we do this, or we have done this. So is there anything here that we, and a lot of this is about formalizing it, so is there anything here that we haven't done?
So the one thing that we haven't done is the cost of service study. That's something that has never been part of any of our policies, so that certainly is new. The other one is formal, the next bullet point of formalizing the capital improvement plan. Again, that's gonna be part of the budget process. We've talked about it, we've kind of shared it, but it's never been a formal part of the budget process. And so we are going to establish a five- and a 20- or 25-year capital plan, and the intention, again, is anytime anyone, a staff member wants to add something to that capital plan, then they're gonna have to submit information as to the requirements for it, why they need it, is it replacing something that we currently have? So it's, again, it's gonna establish a formalized plan for that.
Unfunded mandates. Our own unfunded mandates.
Yeah.
Sure plan.
What does cost of service mean?
Cost of services.
Is it service that we provide, or just?
Well, we're starting out with the development review department. That's the one we're gonna start with first. And if you remember last year during the 2018 budget discussions, we talked about increasing the fees for the, or adding fees for the engineering portion. So we're gonna start with that one, but we're certainly.
So it's cost of services?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then another new one is the overhead cost allocation model. So that's something that most entities do. They have an overhead cost allocation model that they use for their individual funds, because, you know, staff manages the open space fund, the conservation trust fund, the sewer, the storm drainage. And so with that, there needs to be an allocation of overhead costs for each of those funds. Currently, the only one that we do that for is sewer fund, so this will require us to establish a model for that.
And then with something like that, if we have, then can we pay staff out of that, out of that fund?
It would be a that.
Or do you mean instead of the general fund?
Well, it could offset some costs to the general fund, because unless that person is specifically working 100% directly with that fund's purpose, that's the only time we could directly cost allocate it to it. This is more of like a percentage of an overhead cost, if you will. So we would look at the amount of time that staff is spending on open space or conservation or the other funds, and we would come up with the formula for a percentage, say 5%. I'm just throwing a percentage out there. So a portion of it could be. But if we do find that there's staff that's spending an, you know, excess amount of time, then we could look at that as well.
In fact, I think the mayor's touched on something that Tiffany and I have discussed here for the last couple of years, but if we put together a five-year capital plan and we start to identify grant opportunities, say, in transportation, and those grants start to come in, that is the opportunity for us to directly charge, say, engineering staff as they manage, design, and build these things, because currently we don't do that. And so there is a cost back to the general fund that, in my opinion, is really unnecessary and probably even inappropriate. And so I think that's the goal, is for us to start thinking in those concepts. When we have money in the funds, the capital project fund is one, we'll see the minister.
Sort of like the FIRE model.
Yeah, similar.
Charge an administrative fund, and that's what we used as opposed to.
Yeah, very similar.
So that's kind of why I bulleted these points, is those were different or new or any instruments to what we currently have. Those six items right there. So to be brief, if there's any specific questions on the draft or any policies in particular, I'm happy to answer that. What we're looking at is our recommendation is that, that we, that you approve the formalization of these principles, and we will bring a resolution to council in the near future for review and adoption of the principles.
Specifically, my thought is that we probably take these guidelines and play them out in the process here this coming summer, and so later on, when you actually adopt formally the budget, probably that is the time when you would actually pass a resolution, is my suggestion, on the rest of this, the five years, the capital plans, and these principles. You could do it sooner, but I think the, going through these, through the budget process, I think will add a lot more context for you.
That's really all I had on the principles of sound financial management.
All the fun stuff.
Yeah. Am I on a time limit?
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much.
We'd like to wrap by 10. Can you do that?
I think I can.
Okay.
I'll be looking at the clock.
Think you can.
All right, so part of the principles of sound financial management is that we include five-year fiscally constrained plans with the budget process. And so our, our request of council is to actually adopt financial plans during the budget process. One thing that we're gonna be looking at tonight is we have two scenarios, depending on the outcome of the election in November related to FIRE, and so we'll look at those two scenarios. And then just keep in mind, these are snapshots in time. These are subject to change at any moment. I'll touch on some things that I've changed since the last time we talked about the five-year plans, and some things that we need to continue to monitor in the future. So we'll update them periodically, at least twice a year is my intention, once during the budget process, and then once kind of after the audit is completed or near completion, to keep you up to date on where we are. A little bit about 2017. The best thing about 2017 is they, we ended well above where we had anticipated. We were about $24 million higher than what we had anticipated being at the end of 2017. Part of that's related to sales and use tax. We had some pretty good use tax come in in 2017, so that helped there. Property taxes didn't change very much, about 2%. The largest change was intergovernmental. We were up about 15% compared to 2016, and that's primarily related to the FIRE department. Partners had a larger share in what they owe the city for fire services this year, so that certainly impacted that. So overall, we were up about 6% on revenues. As far as expenditures, personnel were pretty much in line with about 3%. Non-personnel was about 4%, so in total, we were up about 5%. A couple of things that attributed to a higher fund balance at the end of 2017 is we had some pretty significant personnel savings in 2017. We had a lot of vacancies throughout the city. Finance in particular, we had two positions that were vacant for almost half the year, and other departments similar, engineering and even community development had some vacancies this year. Another large change in 2018, which we talked about, or 2017, which we talked about in the budget, was the change in the allocation of EMS services. So there was some significant savings to the general fund in 2017, because of the change in the EMS services that we're providing, so costs were allocated to the EMS fund. So that did definitely impact the general fund. Some professional services were, we just weren't able to get to some projects specifically in community development and engineering or public works, so there was quite a bit of savings related to professional services as well.
Just a quick comment. While we save money on personnel vacancies, it causes a different problem for us in getting the work done. And so in the budget process, you'll hear a little bit about the trend that we saw last year. It's something that we, quite honestly, I am concerned about. So I want to make sure that, you know, quite honestly, the vacancies are kept at a more reasonable rate. So the strategy about how to do that is part of our discussion here in this next budget discussion, that that trend is concerning to me.
You could turn up the air conditioning in this room. Carol's old bundle. Arenas, I brought a swear. It is fun. It's cold. Even Jerry's covered.
People like me to be covered.
So overall, for 2017, our ending fund balance was about $13 million. It was up almost $4 million from 2016, so pretty positive here in 2017.
And two factors there, which you just, just to kind of reiterate the statement, revenues were higher and expenses were lower.
Yes. This graph here just kind of shows you the history of the fund balance of the general fund. In 2014, it was about nine and a half million, kind of went down to 9.1 in 2016, and you can see the big jump in.
But I'm sitting here going, expenses were lower, but the arrow was up.
Oh, yeah, they weren't lower, they were lower than the revenue.
They were lower than expected, but they were still more.
Than the prior year.
Right.
Yes, yes.
There was a savings to expect.
Sorry. Be a savings, maybe. I wouldn't say it's a savings.
So yes, you can see the increase of almost $4 million in 2017. And again, that's unaudited. I just want to make sure you understand that we haven't had final, I don't anticipate any changes, though. And then kind of a preview for 2018, we're expecting it to go up slightly by about $500,000. And we'll talk about some changes that we've made in 2018 projections. So for the projections for the general fund, one thing that we did do is we adjusted 2017 to the actual ending fund balance from our projected that we had in the budget and in the previous financial plan. The one thing that I really want to touch on is retail sales tax. So I hope everyone reads front to back the monthly retail revenue report that we present every month. A lot of work goes into that, but it's very important information. It kind of tells you where we are about the year and on a monthly.
The silence was deafening, you guys.
I read it. That was respect. Scary.
It's late.
It's late scary.
So the one thing that I do want to touch on and talk about is retail sales tax. Originally, we had projected for 2018 that our sales tax would be up about 4.2%, which at the time of the formulation of the budget, that was on target and where we expected. Well, we've been watching our retail sales tax over the last five months, and as of the April report, if you might have noticed, the retail sales tax portion is actually down about 1% compared to last year. Certainly not trending where we anticipated to be trending. Now, I'll give you a little review of the year. So a little positive in May, but we certainly want to watch that, because if we're not gonna get close to where we had anticipated, we may be having a different discussion later on in the year. I don't know if any of you might have seen a recent article, and I'm gonna bring Parker up, but in a recent article related to Parker, they're kind of seeing the same trend, and they actually passed an ordinance to reduce the 2018 budget by about $2.7 million, because they, again, they're not seeing the retail tax, retail sales tax come in like they had anticipated.
So Tiffany, the summer months coming up, those generally tend to be more flat, and so looking ahead, the Christmas really doesn't hit until January, right?
Right.
Is there any, anything that you see that might cause an uptick?
Well, one thing is we have a hotel coming online in July, I believe. They're anticipating their opening, so that's definitely gonna help a little bit. It's gonna bring in more revenue than we currently have for retail sales tax.
Retail sales tax from a hotel?
People coming here, they spend money at.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and we still have a 3% tax on hotel rooms, so we'll be hitting that, which we haven't previously gotten.
So the criteria of bike race might help?
It could potentially help.
I mean, I think when I'm saying, like, we're down 1%, trying to get back up, that's a lot. That's a climb.
It's almost a 2%, you'd have to have the makeup.
Yeah.
It is, but I'm hopeful, because May was, was better than we anticipated, so I'm hoping that it'll follow suit, but we're gonna, I mean, we just have to watch it monthly to see where it comes in. And you're right, that Christmas season is really gonna dictate how we end 2018.
And I think, too, by the time we get into the budget discussion with council, say, August to September, we're obviously gonna have a pretty good idea where this is going. So we're positioned now to do what's necessary to make sure that our expenditures are in control here. So this is just an opportunity to kind of give you a heads up about where we're at financially. We're pretty sound, obviously, but it's, it's not where we had hoped it would be, and we're not alone, so other cities are seeing a similar trend.
Should we have the mayor look directly into the camera and tell the four people watching to go shop locally?
Shop, shop, pick and drop. Well, and the housing market is really, $2 billion is lost in the economy in Colorado this year, because people are paying more for housing, so its disposable income is getting sucked up into housing costs, so it's, and that's not changing. The average cost for a home in the metropolitan area is damn near at a half a million dollars.
That's our.
Yeah, and I.
Big bull.
You're absolutely on point. As people are paying more for mortgages and more for rent, their disposable income is decreasing.
Because wages aren't going up.
Right, and it's gonna definitely impact how much they're able to spend on shopping.
I want to be sensitive to the council's time here, so I have great questions, but I'd like to get to.
Keep going.
Some of the financial.
Get to the meat of the.
Sorry.
You don't want to have a economic discussion right now?
No, it's not. It's, I think it's the budget process, we certainly don't.
So just a couple of other things that I just want to touch on, property tax revenues. So the last time that we looked at five-year financial plans, I had anticipated a downturn in property values in 2020, and pushed that out to 2022, just based on the market. It's slowing, and it's becoming a little more stable, but I don't think it's gonna go down in 2022. So I did bump that out to 20, or 2020, I did bump that out to 2022. So I just want to note that. And then we have the two models for FIRE funding. And a couple of things have been added to the five-year projections. We have a couple of termed, limited-term employee positions that are in here as well.
Just a quick, let me say. Well, and if I may, in next week.
You can sing.
Next week, when we save some money. When we update you on the council imperatives here, you know, part of the retreat discussion was identifying the resources to make sure we get to the end here over the two-year period. So we're gonna share those costs with you, and we've actually just, ahead, put it in the model for the time being, so you can kind of see the effects of this in total.
And we talked about sales use, sales and use tax projections. Again, they're on the uptick, just, I just reduced them a little bit in 2018, so there was a cumulative effect of that over the next five years of about $2, $2.5 million, so. So let's get straight to it. We have two scenarios related to FIRE. The first one is if we have to contract for FIRE services. This is what we would consider worst-case scenario, potentially. I think the one thing that I want to, want council to focus on is the bottom percentages, and that's where we want to have at least 17% in our fund balance for our two-month reserve. So we are required to contract with South Metro in 2019 and every year thereafter. You can see in 2019, we're about 22%, and 2020, we're at 18. In 2021, we fall below our 17%, and we're at 13%. And then in 2022, we're at 8, and in 2023, we're down to the minimum taper amount of 3%. And so again, this is if we have to contract with South Metro for FIRE services over the next five years.
And if I may, let's pause there a minute.
Pause.
I think it's important. It's important. The, the minimum fund balance, the 17%, is a benchmark that we've historically used at the city. Quite honestly, it's one that we've seen as a best management practice in multiple cities. You can fine-tune that a little bit if you want, but the relative magnitude of that number, in my opinion, is pretty sound. And I'm, I'm here to tell you, as your city manager, we cannot put ourselves ever into a position where at 8% or 3%. where at 8% or 3%. And so clearly, if we find ourselves where the vote is not successful in November and subsequent years, we will have to have a discussion in 2019 about how we're going to cut 1.5 million plus out of the operating budget of the general fund in order to sustain us financially. And so that, that number, and I've mentioned this before, is substantial. This is a deep cut across all departments. And in my opinion, that's the kind of conversation we'd have to have in order to sustain ourselves financially.
Well, have we been allowed to have a reserve like that?
No. No, you will not be.
No.
Especially at 3%. The state will be knocking on our door. So I think, this is just demonstrating the significance of this vote in November and how we've, what's happened to us in the fire issue overall. It's, you know, this is the financial impact of the partnership dissolving, in essence. And so now we're here. So that's why this is the financial implication of that projected out over time.
I think that the fund balance percentage is alarming. I think that that cash flow is even more alarming. They're tied to each other, but that's.
That's correct. Yeah, so we've lowered the projection for sales and use tax, just based on our history for it and seen so far to date. And so that compounds over time. And so we don't expect it to, you know, have these giant swings in the future. So we're trying to be realistic, a little conservative with this forecasting. But that, the loss of the sales tax, combined with this impact of the operating on the fire, that combination is going to hurt us here if that vote is not successful. Or another way to say it, we're going to be burning through the reserves pretty quick.
And when you look at the reserves, they're not, they're not that deep. Our reserves are not that deep. We could burn through this fast, it's, and they're not that deep. Do you, do you have a line here that shows the progression of the fire contract?
I do not, 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 this is a summarized.
It does escalate, it goes.
It does, it will increase in relation to property tax values or property tax revenues. So if there were, in 2022, if property tax values go down, the amount that we would be paying would be a little less, because as property taxes go up and down, so does what we pay South Metro for that contract.
That is not, if the contract is, or if the voters approve that the 9.25 mil, that mil will only change if the voters allow a change of.
Right.
That is not, that will not be affected by property values going up or down. South Metro's income will be, but that mil levy will stay.
Mil levy will not change. Now, the amount that a property owner may, might pay might change based on assessed valuations.
Right.
But yes.
Okay.
Do we want to go to the next one now?
Get rid of that page.
All right, so the second scenario we have is with fire inclusion in 2020. So this would assume that the vote in November at 2018 is successful, and we are only required to contract with South Metro in 2019. So this one does look much healthier compared to the previous one. In 2019, we're at 22%. It goes up a little in 2020 to 25%, but then in '21, down to 23. And in 2022, it's down to 20. And then in 2023, we're at our 17%, where we would like to be.
Other financing sources uses that are negative, that's the allocation to the capital?
Yes. So in the previous model, there would be no additional funding for capital, as we had discussed previously. But with this model, this does incorporate the $3.1 million annually in relation to the inclusion with South Metro. And it also does reduce our property taxes in 2020, as we noted that we would do as well. So those two large pieces are included in this model.
And looking at this trend up '22, '23, going from '29 to '17, what does that look beyond?
It would continue to go down unless our revenues increase or we were to cut services.
My experience with a general fund specifically is that a five-year is probably a realistic planning document. I think what should go beyond that, I think it's, it becomes a little more difficult to justify. Now, utilities will go beyond five years, depending on how they're financing debt a lot of times. But in the case of the general fund, I'm recommending that five years is a reasonable horizon. And I think the decisions that we make in the next two to three years can certainly inform us here. But I view this, quite honestly, as very stable.
And I think it's also something to think about, because we consider whether or not we want to use anything out of our reserve.
Correct.
Because when you see this, all of those numbers will shift.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, I think you have more flexibility with this one, obviously. You know, you could, in future years, here, depending on how certain actions are taken, and personnel tends to be the one that you really want to focus on with the general fund. You do have more flexibility on how to manage some of those other costs in the future.
And I will say, these models are fully staffed, which hasn't always been the case every year. We typically have vacancies every year. So to be conservative, we do budget for full staff. The one thing that I will caution is the fire department, being that it's practically a third of our staffing for the city, with no longer having a fire department, the amount of vacancy savings is certainly going to be compressed. These would then be a larger department, and they don't tend to have as many vacancies compared to fires sometimes. So the savings that we've seen in the past related to vacancies will certainly be reduced because of that.
Personnel costs are the same in both one. If we're losing a third of our employees.
In which one, I'm sorry?
Under expenditures and personnel costs.
Mm-hmm.
It's the same, same with fire inclusion and without a failure. So if we have fire inclusion, firefighters aren't employees.
We're contracting.
Yeah, we're contracting, so it's actually in 2019.
Okay, so they're gone in both, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
2019 is when there's no longer fire. So you see that big dip in 2019, down. So those are the two major differences in the models is fire with inclusion or fire contracted through 2023. So kind of quickly to summarize, without inclusion, our fund balance drops to 3% in 2023, and with inclusion, we're able to retain 17% or higher through 2023. Two completely different paths for the same.
So when is the good part again?
This one's the good part. 17%.
That's much better. Four slides, and she says she's done.
So again, requested council action is that we're able to adopt financial.
So are you saying should?
Turn to the budget.
Because I'll take it from you.
Okay, I've got 10 minutes. Stay on, stay on course. All right.
Nice.
Okay, we'll touch on capital projects really quickly. Compared to 2016, total revenues were down, and that's mostly related to building use tax revenues. And expenditures were down a little bit as well. Overall, our fund balance decreased by about 1.7, so we're about $14.1 million at the end of 2017. Building tax revenues, the number one revenue source for capital projects, just kind of give you a history of how they vary, depending on building, let's see. We project 1.5 annually, that's about standard.
Very volatile.
Very volatile, yes. Yeah, you can see.
No.
2015, 2016 was a really good year. I had 2.9 million. Fund balance, you can kind of see, it went up in 2015 a little bit, but that was because of transfers from the general fund. We're no longer able to do that, so it's starting to go down. You can see that. Priorities are the same, we still have to fund our leases, we have vehicles, we need to replace technology, HUTF, and then priorities two and three, additional street infrastructure and building improvements. Lengthy list of unfunded projects, we'll talk.
It's not even the whole.
This is, this is one page of probably 20. We have a lot of needs, infrastructure. Five-year fiscally constrained capital plan. So one thing that significantly changed in the capital projects fund is related to fire expenditures, future projected fire expenditures related to apparatus and equipment. So I've stripped that out of this plan. The one thing that we did add is we have no budget for maintenance on buildings throughout the entire city. And so this was an opportunity for us to at least add $300,000 a year to help maintain some of our buildings throughout the city. Now, what that's going to hit us is nothing.
We just couldn't afford it. In my last projection, we just had to show in 2019, beginning in 2019, building maintenance projects, zero. Years out, we just, there was no funds.
How many buildings do we have?
Well, was it 34 or something?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is some, obviously some nominal amount here. And we'll talk more about this later, this summer and fall, and just about where we're going to try to understand what's the real need behind building maintenance. We've talked a lot about street maintenance, but building maintenance is something we have not talked about.
Issue of what to do with the fire buildings, or not?
It stays. Number 11. Number 11, right here? That stays.
Yeah, but I mean, in terms of maintenance and why to use it, that was my, my issue of.
Yes, I do remember, yes. So, good point. Per the agreement, you know, we're responsible for kind of the larger maintenance items. So if the roof caves in, we're going to pay for it. For them to maintain routine items, fairly nominal, their responsibility. But again.
We just remodeled that.
Yes, we did.
The number was up, so I don't, it's in good shape.
I think for the, for the short term here, certainly.
So I don't know if you recall that when we presented the five-year capital plan at the end of 2021, I believe, we were down to about $757. So we've gained a little bit in the capital projects fund. But still, $1 million at the end of 2022 is not very good.
Now, let's pause here just for a minute. The important piece here to show is the.
Suck it, you stupid.
Yeah, so, you know, again, if the inclusion vote is positive, then we're showing here, of course, the transfer here to dedicated street maintenance. So that is in there. So that, we've definitely got that covered if the vote is positive. What is missing is that there is no other capital funding for all that other list, you know, the big transportation and capacity improvement, Santa Fe, or Broadway, or, you know, major renovations to buildings or whatever, all that is just not there.
And the Tabor money is not something that we will be seeing for a while because of the disappearance of the $7 million.
Of the partner revenue, yes.
So Tiffany, in 2020, again, if we don't have inclusion and we don't have this transfer of dedicated street maintenance, we're down to.
We would still be at the same, because there's a revenue coming in for the exact same amount as the expenditure. So yes, we'd still be at about $1 million at the end of 2022.
So do we have, in terms of building maintenance, for example, do we have an idea of how much maintenance we would need to be doing so that we don't really get in trouble?
Keith Reister and Public Works are on a mission to get that answer. So you'll hear about it in the budget process. So the asset management concept we applied to the street side, we're taking the exact same approach to the building side. So they're in process of trying to make that assessment. So we have more best management practice about what to expect for the age of the buildings. For example, this building, the HVAC systems, elevators, you know, we haven't touched it since it was constructed largely. And so we're trying to get a better idea of what we should have been doing and should do. The elevator's one that's, quite honestly, do we have to pay for that as a latest fix? Maybe not.
We're, we're in process of redoing that.
Okay, the elevator failed here. Maybe that.
More than once.
Yeah, it failed here. So we're in process of figuring out how the heck we're going to get this thing fixed. But, okay, so.
Fix the rehab, the tire.
That's what I think Public Works is trying to assess.
I don't think we can rehab it fully because of ADA.
ADA is now, and it wasn't, back in the 70s, it wasn't an issue.
I replaced elevators in the library, right, a few years ago, and that was a chunk of change.
Yes, we've made some modest improvements by ADA standards, but they're not fully compliant.
It's usually $150,000.
A grant, maybe, did we?
I think it was conservation trust.
Conservation trust funds, yeah. So good, all good examples, we're going to play this out in the budget process later, so you'll enjoy much more deeper conversation.
So this doesn't account for any grants? Coming back to the grants discussion, if some of those grants are tied to capital projects, they would.
$10 million grants.
Right, there's no, no, no connection, no funding for grants in there.
And that's the only way you can budget. You can't budget grants that you don't know you're going to get.
Well, you, there is a strategy, depending on the type of grant, on the transportation side, you can, depending on how Dr. Cog plays out this transportation model. So you will know in advance, years down the road, that Shore.
You're in Littleton.
Sorry. Littleton. When we get our name in the queue, we'll know it, and then we can plan on it.
But then that's a budget item at that point.
That's right, exactly. That's the difference.
And there'll also be a budgeting of if they, in November, and we won't know this until after we've done our budget, but before we.
Approve it.
And we usually approve it in October, or we can amend it. But if the state's transportation bill, it does go and it passes, then we will have money coming in for roads and streets. That will show up in here.
Good example, yes.
And that's millions.
You got one minute.
All right, so in summary.
Yeah. It's coming from the attorney, so I take his advice.
But what I think is important to remember about the capital projects fund is, while it may appear healthy as far as fund balance in the interim, we know that our unfunded needs far surpass what our future funding capabilities are. And so the ultimate question is, after 2023, how are we going to fund capital projects? That's the ultimate question.
We're going to have a little more discussion next week, so.
Think we could taxi Airbnb's?
Well, there's nine of them, I don't think that's going to.
Tax them right out of existence.
Yes. 100% tax.
Thanks, Tiffany.
Thank you, Tiffany. Council, anything else?
Two.
Two.
Our turn.
Woo-hoo.